And kind enough to respond, John. We're not going to have the planning session on Tuesday as a result of meeting on Monday. And we'll go ahead and get started. Also, Shannon Kane is on vacation and will not be in attendance today. We'll go ahead and get started with the city manager's briefing. Mr. Spohr.
Certainly. I'm going to recuse myself on the wind part because I have not been able to vote on that issue when it's become for city council because of my stake so small in Dominion Resources. But it did require me to abstain, so I will rejoin the conversation when we get to offshore oil and gas. I'll come back.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Mayor and members of council, good afternoon. And this item has been periodically bounced around. We've given you updates before on it. This current one was requested by Mrs. Kane, and Bob Mathias is here to present the PowerPoint.
We're glad to have you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, great to be here today. As Mr. Spohr said, we annually for the last several years have given you all an update on energy development. And last year, we did it on August 28th, so we're right on schedule. I'm going to run through the piece about offshore wind very, very quickly. We presented it to you all before, and there's only been a few things, so I'll go through that at the speed of light if you don't mind.
Sounds good.
Pardon me?
Sounds good.
Okay. You all are well aware of, we've been working on offshore wind for a number of years. Your council's done things like appropriating $50,000 to have a meteorological tower put at Chesapeake Bay Light Tower. That was before the wind area was actually moved farther east. We've got great opportunity for Virginia to service the entire mid-Atlantic. We've got the port readiness study, and I want to call your attention, this is not only, sorry. These ports also would work to support offshore oil and gas too, but they would certainly support offshore wind development. These are some of the things that Virginia Offshore Wind Development Authority has done. As your council knows, I was appointed to VADA back six years ago by Governor McDonnell, reappointed by Governor McAuliffe. I'm currently chairman. We've done a lot of things over the years to support offshore wind development, and especially working with the Virginia Aquarium, who did a great well migration study. These are the mid-Atlantic wind energy areas. There's one down off North Carolina also. This is the Virginia wind area. It's about 24 nautical miles offshore of the beach. It used to be closer by about 12 miles, but because of maritime interest, we moved it farther to the east. These are Virginia supply chain companies again that could support the entire offshore energy supply infrastructure. Shipbuilding and repair, fabricated sheet metal, marine construction, a lot of jobs we currently have, even more jobs we could have. The VALTAP project is to design and develop and demonstrate the state-of-the-art grid-connected 12-megawatt facility. It's basically two Austin 6-megawatt turbines. It's located just on the eastern edge, excuse me, western edge of the larger Virginia offshore wind area. The larger area, by the way, could support up to 2 gigawatts of electricity using 6-megawatt turbines. And here, this is something just tremendously exciting to me. This is the Austin turbine, 241-foot turbine blades, the rotor 492 feet across. The hub, right here, what we call hub height, 325 feet. This is huge construction, so big, in fact, there's no ship in the U.S. that can lift these facilities. The ships actually have to come from Europe at about $200,000 a day to build them. Dominion asked for bids for the VALTAP project. They only received one bid that they accepted. It was for $375 million with no cap. The Dominion inside the house estimate was for $230 million. That included about $45 million in federal funding, grants that they've received. Dominion is now working with VADA on a mediation process. Possible outcomes, less technology. We were looking at using a innovative twisted steel jacket that was going to be built over at Huntington Ingalls Shipyard. An improved bidding process. The first mediation session we had, a lot of folks from the industry said that Dominion didn't do as good a job as they could have at reaching out to potential bidders. More experience sharing and less of the, less loss of the project. There is a project moving forward on the East Coast off of Block Island, Deepwater Wind. They're building five Austin turbines for $360 million total. So they're building turbines for $70 million apiece, where Dominion's price is for two turbines for $375 million. Market reality, Dominion Power is building a 1.6-gigawatt combined cycle gas plant out close to Danville. This is dispatchable. It's high efficiency, relatively low emissions, and the rider so far is 75 cents on your bill. Since we are a regulated utility, or Dominion Power is, the reason that they backed off from moving forward the VALTAP project is they didn't think they could convince the State Corporation Commission to approve the rate increase needed for 12 megawatts of electricity for $375 million. And the rated efficiency on the Austin turbines is 40%. So basically, you have 12 megawatts of electricity that's available about 40% of the time. Here's the biggest disincentive to wind and other alternative energy. This is natural gas prices, you can see, going back to '08. We're down to about $2 per million BTUs. And this is the good news, bad news. We have a tremendous amount of natural gas in America now, thanks to fracking. We have two major pipelines under consideration in Virginia, one that would serve the Hampton Roads area. The bad news is, it's not alternative energy. So I'm going to go right into offshore oil and gas research and development. The Gulf of Mexico is the most active. There are 8,000 leases with, in the Pacific, there are 79 leases. Alaska, there's 263, I think it's actually 264, because the Obama administration yesterday approved drilling in the north Atlanta, north of Alaska area. And I want to, the demand for oil in America is 19.05 million barrels a day. This is something you've seen before in our previous presentations. The pointer's gone. This is the area where wells were done back in the late '70s, early '80s, the last time that this area was really looked at. Sort of anecdote is Brown and Root Corporation bought 2,000 acres at Cape Charles in, back in the '70s, and that was going to be a big oil platform development area. They were going to support all the oil and gas offshore from that, and they have since sold that. I think Dicky Foster actually bought it, so it's sort of off the way here. This is the Virginia offshore program area presented by Mining Mineral Services. The Continental Crust, which is to the west here, the continental shelf, the continental slope. This is about 50 to 60 miles offshore, which is the western limit of where oil and gas can happen, and then the continental rise down to the ocean floor. This is basically 100 feet here, and it drops off very precipitously to 5,000 to 6,000 to 8,000 feet in depth. This is offshore minerals management in the federal government. They're responsible for 1.76 billion OCS acres. That's in the Gulf of Mexico, the West Coast, places like that. Seven to 500 leases, you can see, they do a lot on a day-to-day basis. $8 billion in annual revenue. That's not cost, but that's revenue coming back to the federal government through royalties, rents, et cetera. This is their core objectives, safe offshore operations, environmental protection, and fair market value. Again, this is to ensure the receipt of the fair market value for the lands and rights leased about, from the federal government. Offshore oil and gas are considered federal resources. Offshore development opportunities, this is diversify the region's economy. Council has been very active in this. We're over-dependent on DoD. They're a great industry to have in town, but we obviously need to diversify the economy. The mayor's biotechnology effort is certainly in line with that. As mentioned previously, there's a tremendous amount of commonality between the offshore wind supply chain, job skills, and offshore oil and gas development. Lots of potential jobs for the thousand veterans that separate from the service every month here in Hampton Roads. The region's upriver shipyards, like Newport New Shipbuilding, Dry Dock Company, Huntington Ingles, and all the other upriver yards could be great places for job creation. And up to 25,000 new jobs could be created through, in Virginia, through development off Virginia. And I might add, this is for the mid-Atlantic area. Virginia, Hampton Roads, is in a great position, and you've got a map I gave at your, put at your places here. It actually shows the mid-Atlantic area that's under consideration now. And as you can see, it actually goes north of the old lease block 220. So Hampton Roads could be the service port for that entire mid-Atlantic area, because there's not a port north of Charleston that has the kind of infrastructure and expansion area that's available here in Hampton Roads. Royalty payments, look at those as revenue payments, because it goes way beyond royalties. But currently, the royalty payments are not authorized under federal law for the Atlantic Coast. But both our senators, as you've got a letter in your package, and Congressman Rigel have been strong proponents of expanding royalty payments, revenue from offshore oil and gas to Virginia. And it's thought that as in the case of the Gulf states, this would be a combined royalty revenue payment from the Atlantic, mid-Atlantic states. So whatever revenue would be generated within the region would be shared to all the states that were involved. $300 million, this is a prediction from the McDonnell administration, could come to the Commonwealth every year. I'd probably say that's in 25 years or so, because it would take that long for the development to get spooled up. And obviously, they could be used for lots of purposes, such as addressing sea level rise, which a lot of folks say would be exacerbated by the use of more petrochemicals and petroleum products. And these funds would not reduce, would not reduce existing royalty payments to other The revenues, excuse me, are made up of the rental fees, the actual royalties, and what they call bonus bids, which are one-time cash when they do the leases. And they go into mean range evaluation and use Monte Carlo simulations to come up with the bonus bid, so that's about as much as I understand about it. These are federally owned resources, as I said. I've heard some folks say that I support offshore gas development, but not offshore oil. In spite of the sophistication of the technology, when they drill a well, they have a pretty good idea there's going to be petroleum products there, but they're not really sure what the mix of oil and gas is going to be. So they have to, after they bring a billion-dollar drilling facility into place and they spend $500,000 a day, their lease is going to entitle them to whatever is there, oil and gas, or just oil or just gas, if that's what they're, they really can't just remove all the gas from a well, because then the oil, which is a federal resource, would become unrecoverable. And this is the existing formula that's used down in the Gulf states. Here's risks from offshore development that are fairly self-evident. Oil spills has happened down in the Gulf of Mexico, blowouts, oil or other residual beaches, loss of income, damage to our brand, very important to all of us here, long-term residual economic impacts of the city and the Commonwealth, loss of anticipated royalty payments, and again, I'd say revenue, because it's the rents and other funds, ship collisions, groundings, other accidents, and most importantly, disruption, conflict with military operations, which I'll get to in a moment. Mitigation of risk. Prior to the BP accident in the Gulf, one agency was responsible for promoting offshore oil and gas, collecting the revenue, and regulating it. Obviously, it was sort of a fox in the hen house type scenario where, hey, and I'm going to say this happened, but you might not be astrident with your regulations if you knew it was going to reduce your revenue. Three separate organizations were created. These are Office of Natural Resources Revenue, Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, which also works on offshore wind, and the Bureau of Safety and Environmental Enforcement. There's also been substantial additional environmental regulations adopted for offshore oil and gas, and the Obama administration, just the last several months, has suggested or promulgated new regulations, which are being called into question by the oil industry. These are natural processes of mitigation. All oil and gas development will be at least 50 miles offshore. The cold dense South River Flowing Labrador Current is thought to act as a partial barrier to spills coming ashore, and the northeast River Flowing Gulf Stream would tend to mix and pull the oil and gas spilt, spills away. This shows you, and this is from an OCS study that was done here in Virginia, shows you lease block 220, and again, it's a larger area, but it shows you these currents, eddy currents, that would tend to pull the eddy spills away, and shows you the coastal current, which is the Labrador Current that I mentioned earlier. Other concerns, Department of Defense has produced a map showing areas where activity of oil and gas could and could not take place. DoD is currently reevaluating these possible activities. We expect it to be finished in the next several weeks. That report has been in the Secretary of Defense's office for a number of months now, so I can't guarantee that it'll be come out in the next several weeks, but I do know it's working its way through the process. Everyone, including the council, has pledged to keep the concerns of DoD foremost in the decision-making process, and Wallops Island has also expressed the concern. Give you another little anecdote, though. They do oil and gas exploration, obviously, and development on the West Coast, and they shoot missiles out of Vandenberg Air Force Base. They have a shelter-in-place protocol there, where if they're getting ready to launch a missile and the oil platform is downstream, downwind from it, they actually have a protective space within the oil platform that they go to. Lease block 220, and again, I'd say that's the mid-Atlantic area that I showed you, the larger map, is part of the draft strategy for 2017, 2022. It includes the potential sale in the five-year program for a portion of mid-Atlantic outer continental shelf, Virginia and North Carolina, and it's a little bit of Maryland also. Leases are around 50 miles offshore, extending it 200 miles offshore, as I mentioned. 200 miles is basically the international limit. This is the lease block 220 and beyond, actually, DoD restrictions. I'm going to point here, because the pointer doesn't work. This is basically the 50-mile line here. Right in here is the continental shelf. BoM has said that this area offshore of Virginia and North Carolina very much looks like oil-rich areas off of Canada, Africa, and Brazil, and is thought to contain, possibly to contain some very substantial deposits of oil and natural gas. As you can see, the blue area, there's no restrictions at this time, according to the DoD. And I'd also call attention to the fact that with the technologies available today, they could drill, the companies could drill in the blue area, and they could drill as much as 20 miles horizontally and be well into the restricted area, but there'd be no restriction or impact on military activities. Again, this map, this will be, I think, one of the key decision points for the council as we go forward, based on the new map that's coming out. Here's the five-year OCS leasing plan development, and we are right here. So there are public comment has been received, is still being received. A number of localities on the East Coast have expressed concern about offshore oil and gas. And then the final program will be published late next year. If you're left off of the program, you can't be added back on. Hampton, Virginia, excuse me, the lease block 220 was included in the draft program prior to 2010, and then we were, we removed after the Gulf incident. And then the final program announced.
Excuse me one second, Bob. If I can stop you on that.
Yes, sir.
Go back to the other slide, then. So our current lease area is the 2020 was removed in the, is it in the current draft?
No, it's, we're in the current draft. We're under consideration, the mid-Atlantic area that I gave you on the larger map.
Removed in 2010.
Yes, sir. And actually, in 2010, they were only considering lease block 220. And that's why I was trying to use lease block 220 perhaps more than I should, because it's a consistent thing for the council.
Okay, but it's in the draft in 2015?
Yes, sir. Yeah. And again, that's inclusive in area, council had concerns in the past, your resolution that the map, the 220 map, well, let me see, go back here. This map, the lease block 220, was developed under something called the theory of equal distant lines, which I don't understand. One would think that the boundary for Virginia receiving revenues for royalties would be the continuation of the Maryland-Virginia border. That's basically what the map now shows.
Thank you.
Okay. This is, again, a little more emphasis on lease block 220, but based on 30-year-old data, there was a potential for 130 million barrels of oil. That would be about six days, nine days, six days, days' use, and 1.3 trillion cubic feet of natural gas. The draft report, however, has 2.2, excuse me, 2.4 billion barrels of oil in the mid-Atlantic area, and then a whole bunch of cubic feet of natural gas. And again, the question comes up, at what price does, for natural girl oil or natural gas, does offshore oil and gas become unprofitable? I can't predict what the price of crude is going to be in 2021, when our lease would come up, but that will obviously be the decision point for companies that are interested at that time. I know yesterday, crude went down to like $41 a barrel. So it's down pretty low, and it's causing a, if Iran, if the Iran deal is okay, that would add another 2 billion, excuse me, 2 million barrels a day into the mix. Iraq is up to 2 million barrels a day more than under Saddam Hussein, and America is producing an awful lot of oil and gas that we weren't just six or eight years ago, especially in the Bakken deposit out in the Dakotas. Recent developments, and BoM was very excited about this. They basically have the National Academies establish a new standing committee on environmental science and assessment for offshore energy and mineral resources. Okay. BoM has had a record of decision on the environmental impact statement they did for new geological and geophysical data acquisition. Again, as I mentioned earlier, there's a number of localities that have objected to this work that needs to be done to find out how much oil and gas is there. They have approved one permit, which I think tells you the technologies involved. The one permit that's been approved so far has an airplane flying a lawn pattern, model lawn pattern, up and down over where they think oil and gas is, and has devices that measure very minute differences in the magnetic field of the earth. And then they compare that to other areas where they've done the same measurements, where they have oil and gas, and they can compare these measurements and make a rough guess as to whether oil and gas are found. That's obviously not going to hurt anything, and that work is probably going forward. This information, for the most part, will be proprietary. They, they will go out and do this work, and then they'll sell it to an oil company. That's the American way. One permit has been issued. As I mentioned, two were withdrawn. They still have eight applications, and issuance is expected in spring. There's quite a bit, getting back to this, there's quite a bit of pushback, as it were, about the geotechnical work, which involves basically pulling, sonic cannons is the name that's used, behind the vessel and bouncing sound waves down to the earth's crust and so forth, and then seeing what comes back. The technology is, according to BoM, safe. It is not, there's not been one documented loss of a marine mammal. That's an item of much discussion among the environmentalists, but that's from the BoM page, and we'll provide you more information in your Friday package on that. But as you can see, they're going out to the 200-mile limit, and there's a number of companies that have expressed an interest in the mid-Atlantic area off Virginia. Okay. Here's the policy options for city council. There are a lot of options, but we've laid out five here. Take no action, the current position remains. The resolution of February 23rd is, 2010, is in your package. Receive additional information. Opposed with the resolution, wait for the new information and the possible change in DoD maps, and wait till after the presidential elections, possible new directions. I've got some slides here, some pictures that I want to go through very quickly, and then I'll take questions. This is Port Fouchon in Louisiana, which, if you go to the end of the earth and then look on the horizon, you can see. 20 years ago, this was a marsh, very much like Crane Island. They now have 400 vessels a day, up to 650 feet go in and out of here. They service 80% of the oil wells in the Gulf Coast. They've taken over Houston's role. They go all the way down to Mexico. I will say that the development on the East Coast, the Atlantic, is going to be much different than the Gulf of Mexico. There's not going to be a plethora of platforms, just because it's very deep drilling. The platforms, as I said, are a billion dollars apiece, $500 million, excuse me, $500,000 a day. And so it will probably be a discrete number of platforms offshore, rather than the platforms that have accumulated over the last 60 or 70 years of drilling in the Gulf. These are just one shot of the helicopter. There were numerous helicopter fields down there in Port Fouchon or down there that serviced the oil wells. Basically, the folks work 14 to 21 to 28 days on and 14 to 21 to 28 days off. The Port Fouchon folks are very vocal about saying, we tell a high school graduate, you give us two years of apprenticeship, basically, and you'll have a $60,000 a year job, paying very good benefits, with the potential to go much higher in salary after that. This last picture is, this looks like a very simple building, but this part of the building right here, for instance, is a highly automated building. It used to take, a 650-foot vessel would pull along shore, pier side, and would take two days to re-provision it. They can do that in five hours now, because of the technology built into that building. They have gantries come overhead, pull all of the trash, drilling mud, whatever, off the boat. Pipes come down, fill up the fuel and water tanks, and they're out in five hours, rather than two days. So lots of technology. And the appendix is your current position, the congressional letter from the two senators on royalties, and again, I would, I would stress that that's revenues. Letter of opposition for the hotel association, a letter of opposition for the restaurant association, a letter from 1999 from the hotel association, a letter of opposition from RAC, and you have a new letter from the aquarium expressing concern about the compatibility of offshore oil and gas and of offshore oil and gas in the nomination and naming of the Norfolk Canyon as a marine sanctuary. So, I have firehosed you, mayor, and I'm very surprised I did it as quickly as I did. And I'll be happy to answer questions.
We got some questions, and we thank you for your presentation, Roseberry.
So, Bob, there's information that's being developed, that's going to be forthcoming, correct? Can you tell us what it is that is still being worked on that we don't have yet?
Most importantly, I think, is the new DOD instruction on drilling in the offshore areas. Again, that's hoped for in three weeks or so, but I'd say certainly by fall, that should be here. That's basically the big item that's out there right now. The geotechnical work, again, that'll all be proprietary. I would suspect that some sniffs, as it were, of information will come out of that if it takes place, which will be next year if it does happen, just to keep people interested. But the, the big thing is the DOD. And again, the, the big thing is DOD, yes, ma'am.
And when do you think we would find out about royalties?
Congress has the bill up now. I, I don't know, ma'am, they can't even, you know, I, I can't say enough bad things about Congress and S. Bell, I apologize, except for Congressman Ridgell, and our two senators, of course, but the rest of them are scoundrels in the Navy. Yeah, it's, it's hard to say what's going to happen on that, ma'am, it's really hard to predict. Again, this is going to be both new money to the states and new money to the federal government if the revenues or the royalty payments are approved. I've, I've heard Senator Kane say, and I believe I've heard Senator Warner say, that they would not support offshore oil and gas unless Virginia or other states did receive royalties, revenues, et cetera. I can't, I don't want to speak for Congressman Ridgell, but I know where the two senators are on that issue.
Bobby?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I guess, Bob, this is a tough one, because obviously, energy is not only a Virginia Beach problem, it's a national problem. And, you know, the policy that we got right now is kind of helter-skelter. We're dependent on foreign oil right now. That, you know, puts us at risk, but also national conflict, armed conflict, and, you know, it's, it's built on a house of cards that's unpredictable. And, but I guess my really, my fear is that I think that we really have to be open-minded going forward, because one day, we're going to have to confront an energy policy that works, and I think a lot of the dictates coming down from the EPA right now could actually adversely affect a lot of families by very expensive, you know, cost of energy in the near future, which are going to hurt not only families, but they're going to hurt localities, they're going to hurt government, and, you know, it's going to really create a lot more problems. Energy could skyrocket if we're not careful and open-minded about being open-minded toward, you know, developing things. The other thing is too, you know, we have to diversify our economy locally, we have no choice with that. And, you know, we have a lot of unpaid bills right now that we're confronting, school modernization, if a sea level rise, you know, we're talking about white rail, we've got to talk about how we're going to pay for this stuff. And the point is, though, as we go forward with technology, okay? And my, you know, my suggestion is to take the kind of wait-and-see thing, and let the apology develop, you know, technology develop that will, in fact, be technology that a lot of people can live with. You know, I tell you, Bill Graham, Braille, Laura Habier, Karen Forger, a lot of people that I respect, you know, are against what's going on, but the point is, though, you know, we've got to deal with the reality that, you know, we're going to have to do something down the line, because what's happening right now is not working. And I think we need a long-term plan, but I think by being patient and letting things evolve over time, get the Navy on board, get technology on board, I just think in the long run, it would really help us.
Bob, John?
First of all, I think, Mary, you took an unfair hit in the editorial in the paper. I think the people-
I'm used to taking unfair hits, John.
I know. But when you're, but I think you have, what you had, the knowledge you had in front of you back in 2010, I think you made a, a good judgment, I just wanted to-
Well, thank you.
But I want to come back and talk about what information we can get. I think, what I'd like to better understand is, how does the insurance agent industry rate the risk and charge premiums to the oil industry? Are they self-insured, and to what extent they create reserves as they see their own risk management? I'd like to understand how the industry polices itself risk management, to see how they look at it, I think that's an important piece of information. I don't like to look at anecdotal accidents as a way to, everybody has accidents, we didn't have any accidents to consequence of Katrina, but I'd like to still understand it, because I think that's a large part of the trade space. I'd, I'd like to understand for those revenue projections, should we get the royalties, what is the volume that those are associated with? I mean, if someone says 300 million, there's definitely some production flow that must be associated with that, and what is that? Because I'm sure that will be a factor of all these proprietary survey looks. I think that, that is important. And I have, just recently was down in Gulfport, and it's not as big as Louisiana, but I did see the big, huge Chevron refinery, and also the place doing the smaller shallow-water oil derricks. But I think that's a piece of information that we, we need, is to understand the, what's the, the probability that those fields, given what has been across, we anticipate that those are even reasonable projections, because I think that's been one, and I think we need to understand the risk factor there, so we can make a scientific understanding. And, and also, I know one of the things that has happened, which I think we need to be cognizant of too, is what has been the change, and the accident rate has been relatively low off California, but to stay the yard, as you mentioned, Bob, earlier, I know there's a lot more continuous 24/4 monitoring, doing crude autonomous underwater vehicles and other types of technology, there now is 24/7 monitoring of operations that, that take place. And I'd like that, that, that way, we have a better understanding, what's the likelihood that those economic benefits could really be achieved? And I think that really, in the end, I think, is where our, I don't think we have to make a judgment call today, by any stretch of the imagination, but whether or not the royalty payments come our way, and whether or not the reserves of gas and oil, if they do exist, exist relative in terms of the volume and the duration of the volume to generate the benefits relative to the risk. And that's what I really, you know, like to make this more of a science project than an emotional project, and I would like to get that kind of information when it's nailed.
Just, I will certainly have those. One little, another anecdote is, BoM had a chart showing the amount of oil that would be recoverable, and there was only about a 10% difference between the amount of oil that was profitable at $60 a barrel and $120 a barrel. I thought it was very interesting that those parameters, but we'll get that information to you. It may take just a little bit, but we'll have it by Friday.
To that point, I don't think anyone, like today, I think it was $41.12 when I last saw it today for Texas Intermediate Crude, but I don't think anyone can guess what that will be in the future. I'm certain that no one will be doing, expect, production, they might do extra production unless the money's there, so, but, but, but whether it is or isn't the world price is another issue, but the risk that exists is independent of the price. And so, as long as we understand the, the risk and how to assess it, then we can move to the other benefit, is the economic benefits when they do accrue, and I think that's why Congressman Ridgell was down in Louisiana looking at that, merit the risk versus saying we're not going to have good-paying jobs for a lot of our households, and all we're going to really have is, you know, minimum wage plus jobs versus something that allows people to work. And that's the environmental trade space, you know, prosperity for households, and, you know, environmental stewardship, and can we find a happy medium?
Port Fouchon, it got hit with a double whammy. Katrina went through an 05, and everything you saw, Port Fouchon was under eight to 10 feet of water, and they cleaned up from that, and then the McCundo blowout, and certainly, BP has spent probably in the range of $30 billion, and they're still paying, and they're still profitable, so, but we'll, we'll try to find out how the risk is managed and whether they're self-insured or not.
And my last comfort note is just relative to the action. I would like, since it's apparently on the horizon, maybe, if it's within this year, I would like to wait to see what that next DOD position is. I would like to wait until after we see that to take some kind of action.
And I've got, just, I've got John, Bobby, and Amelia, but my, my thought on timeframe is pretty simple. I have, we've had this presentation today. I am working with Clay Burnick, and he's going to be working with the aquarium to bring in speakers that are strongly against any type of offshore drilling, which I think is appropriate to hear. And, you know, get that done, then we'll have, if we want other speakers, we'll arrange for that, have public hearings, debate, things along those lines, but, you know, this was a starting point, which I'm glad we have, as you, you know, but if council wants anything different than that, just, just say so.
Well, if I can piggyback with, my comment was going to be exactly that. I think an important component of what we do from this day forward involves tremendous amount of civic engagement and education, and bringing people to the table for the discussion, and that's exactly what you're saying. And the education component, as new material, you know, information and material comes forward, getting it out on both sides, without question.
John?
Well, thank you, Mr. Barry. That is kind of one of the things I'm wrestling with, is the information gathering, and to that end, Bob, what is the, what is the lease term, if, if one were to be granted?
There are, there are five years to start with, and then they could be extended, but there's a great incentive to start drilling immediately when a lease is given, because they have to pay 20% when they're awarded the lease, and then they have to pay the rest of the money almost immediately. And the leases are based, again, on a estimate of how much oil and gas is recoverable, and then there's the bonus points and so forth.
That brings me to my next question, and that is, you know, since the exploratory findings are proprietary, we'll certainly never know what the potential is. I mean, like you said, there may be whisperings of what's there, and obviously, the financial and economic benefits to the city and to the region are based on, you know, what is actually there, but we'll never have that information. I mean, because that's, you know, it's going to be very tightly held, and I'm sure in that bid process, they're going to make sure that, you know, nothing of substance is leaked. So, you know, how, how does that really work? I mean, in terms of, you know, getting to a point where we can actually have real numbers to say, well, you know, these are the types of jobs, and the amount of jobs, and the amount of royalties that we could expect, and-
Well, we can go to Bureau of Offshore Energy Management, we can go to Department of Mineral Energy here in the Commonwealth. In your Friday package, we're going to provide you, Mr. Spoor will provide you a package of information DME did on what could happen in Virginia if we did offshore oil and gas. It was another 20 pages or so I didn't want to give you today, but, but, well, there's a lot of information out there. I think we can come up with some ranges of revenues that would be coming to the city, to the Commonwealth, to the region, and I think we can have some, a fair amount of validity in those estimates, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, you know, John, that DOD thing, waiting for, that could really answer how much further we go, if they came back and said, I can do it. I mean, I could nip it in the bud pretty quick.
But to John's point, there are industry analyst models that look at correlation, not causality, correlation between past prices. They look at what they pay, they look at a discount for capital and some other things to get an idea of what do they believe it is for the bid that they've made, but you're right, we won't know that until after the policy decision has been made to do a lease, you're absolutely right. But there are models that do, do parametric forecasting on what the marketplace believes is there based on the price they pay.
Amelia?
Well, all I wanted to say, first of all, this is a briefing, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So, no decisions have been made. The DOD study is very important, because we remember BRAC situation, let's not forget that situation. The environmental impact study is important. We've also mentioned about the seismic situation. They've looked at it being 50 miles offshore, so we need to get through all of those steps before we actually make decisions about revenue sharing, about job creation. How close are we getting to this point, for a start?
Well, again, the, the DOD report, as other council members have said, is probably the linchpin. I think it's probably a full stop if it's negative. If it's somewhat along the lines here, then it leaves a lot of opportunity for, for further Again, the seismic work will probably begin next year, I suspect, when they finish these environmental reviews, or actually, they're, they're reviewing the bids right now, they have a record of decision on environmental impact statement for that work, so, you know, certainly by the end of this year, or even sooner, you're going to have a lot of other factories given to you by the groups that the mayor and others have talked about, so I think there's, you're just beginning this voyage, as it were. You have a five-year-old position, five years and six months or so, and so, it's probably a good time to revisit such an important thing, to see whether, you know, it's diversifying the economy, protecting the existing economy is basically the, the two parameters you're looking at.
Yeah, because I felt it was important for everyone here and the citizenry out there to understand, we are not making a decision today, this is only a briefing. Thank you.
Louis, then John, then Ben.
Make it clear to me, who controls where the royalties go?
Be it the federal government, they'll have to pass legislation, new legislation, to allow East Coast states and the mid-Atlantic to receive royalties and revenues from oil and gas development.
Okay, and so, the royalties go to the state, and the state then decides who gets what, what part of those royalties?
Congress could prescribe that a certain portion of the royalties go to coastal communities that are impacted, they could give all the money to the state. Some of the money usually goes to land and water conservation efforts. Louisiana, for instance, is using a lot of their money for the, their royalty revenue money for that. They're losing, using tremendous amount of money from the BP settlement to protect their environment down there, so it'll be up to the federal government and the states.
Okay, so, we, we really don't have any say in that, is that correct?
I think that's the understatement.
No, sir. But we work so well with our General Assembly delegation and Congress, I'm sure we can get the right decision.
My point is, we don't have any say in, and, and so, we don't have any way of controlling or knowing where those funds are going to go and how they're going to be spent.
Not at this time, no, sir.
Right. So, we take all the risk, but we have no control. Am I right?
Yes, sir.
John, and then Ben, and we'll wind up.
Just a real quick question, when's that DOD report update expected?
Well, again, it's been expected for the last six or eight months, sir.
One's been in there-
Yes, sir. So, I'm, I'm hopeful in the next month or so, but it's sort of like, DOD was tasked two years, three years ago to come out with a policy on drones by September 1st, and they've already, they said, we need more time, so I, I don't know if they'll get extended or whether we'll, we'll get it sooner rather than later.
I'd miss that, thank you.
It could come out tomorrow, sir.
Yeah. Bob, thank you for the presentation, I thought it was very informative.
Thank you very much.
And this is something that I'm still learning about, I don't know very much about. I've got a lot of questions, and I, it sounds like we're going to have a lot of discussion about this over the next couple of months. You know, my first question is, is you mentioned the price of crude right now, what has that done to the oil industry in the United States?
In the United States, the, in the Bakken deposit out in the Dakotas, for instance-
But it's more, more offshore drilling?
More offshore drilling. It really hasn't done much.
Have there been any layoffs?
I can't tell you about individual layoffs. I do know that there were two mega-billion-dollar platforms that were moving to the Gulf this year to do exploratory drilling, and that's moving forward.
Okay. And then I see, anytime I see, you know, I ran my campaign last year, and my number one priority was bringing jobs to Virginia Beach- one priority was bringing jobs to Virginia Beach and the Hampton Roads in general, and I see 25,000 jobs, I mean, that's something that you have to really, anytime somebody's talking about that many jobs, you have to consider, what, what kind of jobs and where would those jobs actually be?
The jobs would be the gamut from medium technology, for somebody to go offshore for 21 to 28 days, you're not going to pay them minimum wage.
Sure.
You're going to have to pay them very well to get people to do that and to give them the good benefits. So the jobs are going to pay well, I think, the, the Port Fouchon, for a high school graduate to get two years of work and then make $60,000 a year is pretty good.
And Port Fouchon, they have a refinery?
No, all it is, is oil, oil plat, oil development support.
Okay.
I mean, there is nothing there, it is the end of the world. The jobs would be at the shipyards, there are a number of companies, I think, in Virginia Beach, the compressor factory, German compressor factory, these oil platforms need everything from soup to nuts, literally, because they're, they're, they're running 24/7, 365, they're self-supporting, a helicopter farm, perhaps, I'd love to see a...
One thing that I've heard on, as far as having somebody on 14 to 28 days on, you know, off, would it be possible for somebody to be in that industry and not live in the region?
Very possible, yes, sir.
Does that happen in Port Fouchon?
It does. And, but I, I must say, there is not anything at Port Fouchon, and unless you like mosquitoes and fishing, there's not a lot of reason to stay there.
And that's not the case here?
And it's not the case here, no, sir.
Um, I've got just one more question, you mentioned the BP settlement.
Yes, sir.
Are they in court right now?
Um, they're paying quite a bit of money, have paid quite a bit of money, I think they're still contesting, some folks put in claims, and BP is contesting their claims about whether they actually were fishermen before BP and so forth.
I think I read an article about, they were in the courts right now trying to amend their settlement, does that sound about right?
I think that sounds about right. We get some more details on that, sir.
All right, thank you. Council? What we'll do is, we'll get the next briefing set up in probably the next few weeks, but we're on top of that. We will go to City Council, Council, we do have some appointments to make today, so if we can keep those to a minimum, unless there's something urgent, I'd recommend holding off. Comments from council? John?
I just have one, and I'll make it very quick.
No problem.
Because I just happened to be down at Gulfport this last week, you know, Katrina went through there, the eye of the storm, and I think when we come back on our sea-level discussions, it would be very good to look at what were the consequences on population development after they had kind of hit. Because one of the things I noticed there was that there was a major redistribution of population north of I-10, all driven by the change in insurance premiums and the liabilities on that property that was south of I-10.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, so I think those would be instructive thoughts and case studies to look at as we look at those issues.
That'd be good just for sea-level rise, too.
And it was just to look at the implications, or what are the consequences if communities don't act to prevent those kind of things from happening, and once they do happen, there are significant consequences.
All right, Amelia?
Something real quick, I was really pleased, for great examples of civic engagement during National Night Out, where we had, like, College Park, Lake Edwards, Sea-Tac, building relationships with the law enforcement and the electoral officials, and also being able to have a chance to meet with a group at the Arrowhead, talking about the staging area where they gathered all of their neighbors together, one house I went over, and we sat and actually discussed this. Thomas Cole was one that showed great leadership for community organization, so it's good to see that civility.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more before we get on to the agenda review? Mr. Vice Mayor?
All right. I have a vision. First, under ordinances, then resolutions, anybody have any comments on any of them?
Two comments, if I could, I'm voting no on 8A, because I think that we're paying too much, we'll talk about that in the open session. And, and on item two, I just would hope, like we have in the past, but before we go to condemnation, I would just like to make sure that the council knows that we're going to condemnation, not as a preemptive thing, but just that we know we haven't been able to come to a meaningful agreement, that's all.
So are you going to vote on it or not?
I'm going to vote, I'm going to vote in favor of it, yes, that's just a comment, not a, I'm going to vote no on the one I don't...
All the ordinances are going on consenting, except 8A will show a no vote for John, is that correct, Mr. Vice Mayor? All right.
All right, under planning, Victoria Park Homeowners Association, Princess Anne, Ms. Henley.
There were speakers at the planning commission, so there may very well be here. You do have a speaker, some of the...
All right. Here. Item... What happened? Item two...
It's violating against the law.
Studio Evolve LLC, Mount Trashmore Office, Rose Hall, anybody opposed to that?
I would do it.
Say pardon?
Expansion to existing shell states look pretty good to me.
So we're okay, all right. All right, 2798 Dean LLC, Beach District, Mr. Earn.
I'm okay with that, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Four Fun Spot Amusements LLC, Mr. Earn.
I'm okay with that one, too, please.
Which one?
Four. Oh, I'm sorry, four approval.
You're four approval, is that right? Five, Loray Tucker and Krish Enterprises LLC, Beach District.
I'm okay for that, for approval as well.
Salvage Beach.
Yeah.
I know, straight down.
We've got roving's going.
PF Hilltop, six, PF Hilltop and Regency Hilltop Associates, Beach District.
I'm, I'm fine with that, too, please.
Seven, Mark and Kenny Santani and Macau 1600 LLC, Beach District.
I'm fine with both of those, and just a comment, Mr. Vice Mayor, we, planning is currently working through some reworks to the form-based zoning in the, in the Beach District, so that we can clean up some, some things in there and, and make some of these, these, these items have been coming to us more by right.
Well, because it's certainly made these properties much nicer.
Yeah, and these, and these are great applications, and I'd ask for them to be on consent.
Eight.
I'm so glad to hear that.
City Amendment to Section 111, City Zoning Ordinance Rate Definition, Family Day, Daycare Home, anybody object to that?
All right, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed section pursuant to the exemptions from open meetings by Section 2.2-3711A7, as intended for the following purposes. Legal matters, consultation with legal counsel, briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public party or consultation with legal counsel informed and retained by a public party regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A7, Amanda Smith versus Officer R.R. Ray. Personnel matters, discussion, consideration of, or interviews prospective candidates for employment assignment, appointments, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1. Council appointments, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appoints. Have a motion.
Have a motion.
Have a second.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Davenport?
Aye.
Mr. Dyer?
Aye.
Mrs. Kennedy?
Aye.
Dr. Rollt-Hammon?
Aye.
Mr. Earn?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Wood?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.